Welcome to another edition of Lakeville's City Council Wrap-Up. During this program, we will highlight the agenda items presented to the Lakeville City Council at their July 18th, 2016 meeting. First highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5B, Fire Department Quarterly Report. And to give the background information on this agenda item is Fire Chief Mike Meyer.
All right, I'd like to present the Lakeville Fire Department First and Second Quarter Report for 2016, and I will start with our mission statement. The Lakeville Fire Department is dedicated to serving the community through the protection of lives and property by providing public safety education and professional emergency response. And I'll start with fire inspections for the first and second quarter. You can see commercial inspections in the first quarter, we did 173. Second quarter was 163. New daycare inspections were 3 and 6 respectively. And then also burn permits that we issued in the first and second quarter were 5 and 10. Obviously, the second quarter, we get a little bit busier with everybody doing their spring cleaning and such. Fire prevention visits, again, first quarter was 9 and second quarter was 19, so as of weather changes, we get a little bit busier with that also. And looking at our calls, and I'll break it by quarter, just so you can see the difference here and some of the changes that have happened. So on your left, you see the total calls for the first quarter of 272, which is an increase from what we've seen historically. But looking at the right bar graph, you can see the duty crew is taking a number of the calls, so we've increased what they're responding to during the day because they are there and available. But our calls have been pretty consistent with the stations as far as sharing that workload. And then second quarter, same results, but also getting a little bit busier if you look, 349 calls for the second quarter. And then also the stations did get busier, and a pretty big jump in calls for the duty crew to 171 in the second quarter. And again, numbers year-to-date, you can see we're up about 200 calls, but that, a lot of that attributes to what the duty crew is doing during the day hours. Breakdown of call types in the first and second quarter, and one thing I did look back at is medical assists are up about 10% compared to the past year. Again, the duty crew is responding to those medicals during the day hours, taking up some of that workload for allowing the police officers to do other things versus going on medicals all the time. And then our typical, the false alarms are at 16%, good intent calls about 13%. We did see a small jump in fires at 11%. A lot of that is attributed to mutual aid, auto aid to either Apple Valley, Farmington, or Burnsville. Some of the public events during the two quarters. On May, we held our annual, or six annual blood drive. Our numbers were down quite a bit for what we normally see. We collected 41 units of blood, normally we're in that 70-units range. Also in May, we attended the ECFV picnic at Steve Mashad Park, and that's the new sparky outfit from the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation. We were out at Branchen Farms, the Hope Kids 5K Run. We had a truck out there with firefighters greeting the kids as they finished. In April, we hosted our annual banquet. The Rookie of the Year was awarded to Chris Fletcher on the far-left, and to the far-right, John Clancy was awarded Firefighter of the Year. We had a very good turnout with 172 fire families, which includes active and retired members. And the bottom picture, I'll draw your attention to, those seven firefighters celebrated their 10th year of service with the Fire Department. To highlight some of the training that we did in the first and second quarter, the far-left picture shows, we had three dispatchers that were in train, we brought them out to Abel to show them live burn training, and then we also did some roof operations as far as ventilation. Took them, we put them in the bucket of ladder one and gave them a ride to see what it looks like from up high in the bucket. The next two pictures both happened on the same day. The middle one is the hazmat operation testing, where we had a, our ALF Fire Academy, which is obviously the three cities that we had, all of those rookies go through their final testing for their hazmat operations certification. And then the far-right picture is, on that same day, we were doing agility testing for potential new firefighters. Some of the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation events that we did do during the first and second quarter, we had, the top-left picture shows the, we call it the assembly, they were doing assemblies for, after the fire, so for resident, has to be, obviously, a fire in their house, they leave their house with no toothbrush, toothpaste, those items, so the foundation, along with Thrivant Financial, put together kits for them, for us to give to them. And we also shared those with the police, so if they have a need for them, they can also get those out too. The bottom picture is Fire on Ice, so there's a number of people that participated playing ice golf on the ice out at Kings Lake, and Chart House sponsored that, or sponsored that. And then the far-right picture is Fields of Fire, the paintball event that was done out at Minnesota Pro Paintball. I named it Twins, and that is, the Truck Committee is affectionately called the Two New Replacement Engines that we just recently put into service. We took delivery at the middle, or I should say, the beginning of June. We took about two and a half weeks to get both stations up to speed as far as training and operating the vehicles. On June 26, we met at Station One on a Sunday and spent about 10 hours moving, mounting, and organizing the trucks to put them in service. So they are officially in service, we will work on doing a housing ceremony with them. They are now separated at different stations, but from the pictures, they've been together since they were started to being built. And I have a pitch to do for a Lights and Sirens Glow Run for August 6 at 9:00 PM at Fire Station 4. Please come out and register and join in the fun. You can see we're going to have a pre-run dance party. It is a fun run or walk to 5K or 1.25 mile for kids. If you register before this Friday, you're guaranteed a Glow Run t-shirt along with your swag bag. This does benefit police and firefighters, and if you want to register, it's at the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation website.
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number 5C, Liquor Department Midyear Report. And to give the information regarding this agenda item is liquor store manager Brenda Visnovick.
I'm here to present the 2016 midyear report. And our belief is that the pessimist complains about the wind, the optimist expects it to change, and the realist adjusts the sales. And it would be an understatement to say that the past two years, we've adjusted the sales, and I believe we've done well, and they're not falling down or taking us out of the way. So, sales combined for all stores for the first six months of this year, we're up 4% in sales. By location, Heritage is doing the best with 9.3%. Galaxy is up 4.2%. Obviously, with the new Hy-Vee store, that's seeing a little bit more of a bump. And Kenrick is down slightly, however, with the road construction going on on Highway 50-60 last year, we feel that's probably flat, and that Heritage might be a little, there might be a little bit of an over-adjustment there. 56% of our annual budget is related to personnel costs. With that said, January through June, our labor remains flat despite some increased labor expenses such as hospitalization and also some increased rate for our assistant managers. With that said, our labor currently is running at 9.6% of our sales. Last year, it was running over 10.1% while we were trying to adjust and determine how business was going. So typically, MMBA, which is Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association, the common standard is to remain at 10% or less, and so we're well below that. Commodities for the first six months were down 22.6% compared to last year, and contractual were down 20.3% compared to last year. Lot of that has to do with, we did remodel at Heritage last year, which was about $53,000. We did eliminate the car allowance for the director. We reduced utility expenses with retrofitting of the lights at Kenrick and Heritage. And we eliminated some contractual agreements in which our staff is now taking over those responsibilities. So overall, we're keeping costs down. Now, the great thing about keeping costs down and sales going up is the bottom line. So, right now, our 2016 adopted budget figures show that we're trying to achieve a $993,000 net income by end of year. For the first six months, we are at $485,491, which is up $143,000 over last year, and up approximately 41.9% over 2015. With that said, that net income currently stands at 49% of our budgeted projections, which is right where we need to be going through June, because obviously, July is one of our biggest months, as is November and December. So, looking at other accomplishments so far this year, we did a fundraiser for the Ritter Farm Dorset Park in conjunction with Clear Lake Veterinary Hospital, and we raised nearly $11,000 for that project. We distributed over 1,000 seedlings on Earth Day, that was in conjunction and partnership with Line &amp; Coogles and Paul's Market. We raised over $1,300 for Land of Amazement through two Taste of Lakeville preview parties, and we feel those parties not only brought in some additional funding, but it really gave a great return on investment for the vendors who participate with the Taste of Lakeville. Okay, we raised in excess of $10,000 working with the Lakeville Rotary on the Taste of Lakeville. About $9,300 of that was nomination fees for the 400 wines that were there. We raised money for the glassware, or provided a sponsor for that, as well as for the ice, and provided some silent auction items with those proceeds going to Land of Amazement. That partnership did provide us the setting for this award, which is the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Facility, we'll go this way, Award for Best Community Involvement. So, we're quite proud of that award, just because we as a team and as employees feel very that community involvement is a lot more important than the funds we raise. And if we go back to the screen, the other thing we do, which is a very, and the primary reason we're in business, is to control and responsibly sell, make the sales of alcohol within the city. We kind of set the standard or the value for the way people look at alcohol sales. And with that, I'm very proud to serve on the PATH Coalition, that through education and advocacy, the Coalition challenges our community to prevent youth chemical use and improve mental health. It's been a wonderful group. We do have, if anyone's interested, you can go to path.org for the website or the Facebook. They also have a Twitter account. We've made some big steps, and they'll present this fall, and they'll come to a meeting and present what we're accomplishing. So, for the remainder of the year, we did Brew Battle, we came back. We partnered with the Lions, they were great partners, their volunteers were amazing at how hard they worked, they were endless. It was like working with Rotary all over again. Didn't have quite the turnout, we only had 125 in attendance, but they had great events throughout the entire weekend. July is Land of Amazement Month, we're accepting donations within the liquor stores. So far, we've raised about $2,300 through the month for trying to get that project wound down. In August, we're hosting something very unique, and that is the Minnesota Wine Experience. We will have about 20 wineries coming to the Arts Center, all presenting four to six different wines, and it will be really amazing to see the differences in the wines, as well as the quality has improved so great, so we wanted to showcase those. And then in October is our annual food drive month, so we're looking to have a big success with that. And again, our motto is putting profits into the community since 1934, and in 2015, we put nearly 1.4 million total revenue back into the community, with about $831,000 into equipment, $400,000 into the police station bonds, $165 into the general fund, and a smidgen in for environmental resources. With that said, are there any questions?
Next highlighted item on the agenda is item number eight, Presentation of the 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And to begin a series of presentations, here's Finance Director Geraldine Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to extend my thanks to all of the finance staff for all of the work that they do throughout the year, but especially at the end of the year when we go through the annual audit. It went very smoothly, and you'll hear comments from Bill Lauer, our partner with MMKR, who's actually going to make a presentation on the 2015 audit, excuse me, and the annual financial report. But I would also like to extend my thanks, a special thanks, to Julie Werner, she's the Assistant Finance Director. She plays a very key role in conducting the audit, as well as putting together this comprehensive document that you have before you tonight, so. With that, I'll turn it over to Bill Lauer, partner with MMKR.
Thank you.
Thank you, Geraldine, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You've received the city's comprehensive annual financial report, along with our related reports and management report, and what I'm going to do today is just go through a few of the highlights from our management report. First of all, just to remind you as the body charged with governance of the city, what our role is and our responsibilities. The primary responsibility for the information in that comprehensive annual financial report, all of the data and the disclosures in there, rests with city management. We perform our audit process, provide the opinion at the front of that document as to whether it fairly states the city's financial position and your results for the year under audit. In addition, as part of that process, we take a look at your internal controls and test compliance with governmental accounting standards in the preparation of that financial statement. And you're also subject to an audit of your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations. There's an audit guide put out by the State Auditor's Office that all local governments are subject to. As far as the results of the audit, as Geraldine said, I think it was a very smooth audit process. Again, the city was well-prepared, the records were in excellent condition. Once again, we were able to provide the city with an unmodified or a clean opinion on the basic financial statements. You will note an additional paragraph in our opinion this year that refers to a fairly significant change in accounting principle that was implemented for 2015, and that was the adoption of GASP statement number 68, which has to do with employer reporting for pension plans. This impacts you in a couple of ways. First of all, the city has two plans that your employees participate in that are statewide plans administered through the PERA. One is their general fund, and one is the Police and Fire Fund. And those plans did studies and kind of parceled out the amount of underfunding in each of those plans to all governments that had participants in that plan, and you have to now, as the employer, report that percentage share of any underfunding of those plans on your financial statement. And then also, your fire relief actually is fully funded, and you're now seeing a pension asset reported on your entity-wide statements related to that fire pension. Net, the total of those two plans changed your beginning net position by about $9.9 million, reducing your beginning net position. About $8 million of that was in your governmental activities, and about $1.9 million in your business-type activities, this is on your entity-wide statements. This isn't accrued in your governmental funds, because it's a long-term liability, not payable from your current assets. But your enterprise funds being full accrual do, are proportioned their share of the liabilities, and that did reduce the beginning net position in your enterprise funds by that same $1.9 million that it did for the business-type activities in those entity-wide statements. As far as our other reports that we issued, once again, a very clean audit, we had no findings to report in internal control or compliance for your financial statement reporting, and no Minnesota compliance issues to report this year again. This first slide shows a change in your governmental fund, fund balances from 2014 to 15. These are all of your funds that are primarily funded through property taxes and other governmental sources, charges for services to a lesser extent. So, your general fund, special revenue, debt service, and capital project fund types. At the end of the year, you had about $62.5 million in total fund balances, which was a decrease of about $9.4 million from the year before. The top part of this table summarizes this by the type of fund balance that is, the non-spendable portion relates to any prepaid or inventories where you, it's still an asset to you, but you can't re-spend those dollars for something else, so it's segregated in a separate bucket there. Restricted fund balances are things that are restricted by some external commitment, either debt covenants or external law. Commitments and unassigned fund balances are things that you control internally, commitments, something you've, as a council earmarked. So, the main change of that $9.4 million decrease you see is in that restricted line, which went down about $8.7 million. Primarily, that was due to a debt refunding that happened during 2015. You sold those bonds to refund the old bonds in a previous year, it was set in an escrow account until the call date on those refunded bonds, that happened during 2015. The other main change you see there is that unassigned fund balance, and that's primarily coming from that Water Capital Projects Fund. You see that deficit at the end of 2015, you started some projects in advance of getting the bonds issued for those projects, so that accumulated deficit falls down to that unassigned fund balance category. So, those are really the two primary changes you see there. Drilling down then, within those governmental funds to your general fund, your primary operating fund, this is a very high-level graph showing your financial position in terms of cash and investments and fund balance at the end of each of the last five years. Your total cash and investments in the fund were about $12.4 million at the end of the year, fund balance the same, about $12.4 million. That was an increase of $1.3 million in fund balance from the year before, which was about $1.8 million higher than projected in your final budget. Your city policy calls for keeping an unrestricted fund balance between 40 and 50% of your subsequent year's budgeted expenditures in the fund, and the, excuse me, the unrestricted portion of that $12.4 million fund balance was about $11.9 million, which represents about 47% of your 2016 budgeted expenditures. In the general fund then in 2015, you took in about $25.4 million in total revenue. That was about $1.1 million, or roughly 4.5% higher than budget. Most of that came in two areas, charges for services were about $425,000 higher than budget, and licenses and permits about $610,000 higher than budget. Both of those were driven by the amount of construction and development that you had going on in the city, the engineering fees, residential building permits, permits for other construction-related projects. On the expenditure side, expenditures were about 3% under budget, about $750,000, and they were under budget in all four of the categories. You see here, the largest being in public works, which is $336,000 under budget, mainly because some plus of your engineering got charged to internal projects and more to construction, also street maintenance, and some of your winter snow clearing costs were less than budget. And also, public safety was about $208,000 under budget, most of that was in police department personnel cost and purchase services. And turning to your other fund type, your enterprise funds, you report two enterprise funds, the liquor fund and utility fund. These, as I mentioned, are full accrual, you'll see the 2014 net position that we're reporting there shows as being restated, so we've taken the $1.9 million that was reduced out of the presentation here, so we're just focusing on what actually happened during 2015. So, at the end, in your prior year CAFR, you had a total fund balance of about $121 million after that $1.9 million decrease for GASP 68, you see the $119.1 million 2014 number. Your total fund balance, or I'm sorry, net position in these funds went up by about $5.7 million. Most of that increase was in that net investment in capital assets. A lot of that had to do with the amount of assets which are being contributed to the utility fund. You had about $9.5 million in total capital assets contributed, partially from developers paying for improvements. About $3.5 million of that was due to improvements that were funded through bonds over in your governmental funds and contributed to the enterprise funds, and about another million that was paid for from another governmental agency in a project that was partnered with the city. The liquor fund ended the year with total net position of about $4.1 million, that was $636,000 down from the year before. Of that total, about $502,000 was unrestricted, you also had about $325,000 restricted for bond covenants, and the remainder then is your investment in capital assets in that fund. Your sales for 2015 were about $13.6 million, that was down about 8.5% from the year before. Some of your operating percentages were also down due to the increased competition. Your gross sales margin there was about 24.2% compared to about 25.6% in the previous year. Just for some context, I don't have 2015 statewide numbers yet, but you were pretty much on average with off-sale liquor operations statewide in 2014, that was about 26%, and you were at about 25.6. And then your operating expense as a percent of your gross sales, again, in 2014, you were actually about 1% better than the statewide average, you were about 9.8% compared to an average of 9%. That did drop to 6.8% in 2015. Almost all of that was due to the decrease in sales and margin on the revenue side. Your operating expenses of $2.4 million only changed about $10,000, or roughly half a percent from the previous year, so all of that change was really on the revenue side. And as your liquor store manager, just, operation manager just went through, you did transfer almost $1.4 million out of this fund to support other funds and operations within the city. And finally, your utility fund ended the year with total net position of about $121 million. That was up about 6.3 million from the year before. About $7.7 million of that is unrestricted, the remainder is your investment in utility infrastructure. Your operating revenues in this fund were about $9.2 million, it was about 1%, about $80,000 less than the previous year. Mainly, your water charges were a little less than the previous year due to decreased usage. Your operating expenses in this fund were just under $12 million, up about 3% from the year before, mainly in maintenance and depreciation costs. And as you can see from this graph, you do continue to generate enough operating revenue to cover your out-of-pocket costs. That green line represents your income before depreciation, so you're not fully funding depreciation, you're funding a portion of that, but you are funding all of your current year out-of-pocket costs with your operating revenues in this fund. As I mentioned before, you also had, the last several years, you have some very significant contributions to your utility infrastructure. This year, that was a total of about $9.5 million. And then finally, I added this table in here just to, once again, show you the impact of that GASP 68 restatement, so that 2014 column in your financial statements, last year, you had about $282 million in total net position at the end of the year, after deducting that $9.9 million for GASP 68. That's where you get that $272.7 million beginning net position. So, taking that out, you again see the change of about a $23 million increase in total net position entity-wide. The change in the business-type activities is exactly the same as we just went through for the enterprise funds. The change in the governmental activities includes that governmental fund information we went through, plus all of the long-term capital assets, long-term liabilities in those funds that aren't reported in the funds that get brought into this presentation. And also, on your governmental activity side, you had a significant amount of contribution of capital assets, you had about $6.5 million of governmental activity capital assets that were contributed by developers in 2015. So, that's where that increase of about $6.2 million in that net in So that's where that increase of about $6.2 million in that net investment in capital assets, the top line there under governmental activities. The $11 million increase in restricted net position is in part due to assets set aside for future debt service, assets set aside for a park and other construction, and about $3.5 million of that is the amount of pension asset related to your relief association, which is shown as a restricted for fire relief pensions.
Item number eight was approved by the Lakeville City Council. Well, those were the highlighted items presented to the council at their July 18, 2016 meeting. If you have any questions or comments regarding these agenda items, please feel free to call City Hall. The number is 952-985-4400. Thanks for watching this edition of Lakeville City Council Wrap-Up.